All right, thanks everybody. I appreciate everyone being here. This is a good opportunity for us as commissioners to refresh and get new information about in terms of land use planning. It's always good for me to get these reminders and I hope that it will be for my colleagues and for all of you as well. We will need, this is at workshops, we can't actually do any business, but we do need to have a motion to adopt the agenda.
Oh no.
Second? My motion, second to adopt the agenda, all in favor? Aye. And opposed? All right, so we got the agenda. You ready?
All right, thank you mayor and commissioners and everybody else. Welcome to the coziest city commission meeting I've ever seen. I feel like we need a roaring fire behind you. But uh...
Fireside with each other.
Very cozy room, so yeah, thank you. Sorry for the technical difficulties in the beginning, but I'm Sean McDermott, Assistant City Attorney, and I was asked to present this to the commission. And just very briefly, just to introduce myself, particularly for the new commissioners, you know, because I imagine some folks, you know, might be thinking, what is a lawyer doing up there giving this presentation? You know, nobody likes lawyers. Generally, I don't tend to like lawyers. I am a lawyer, but except for the ones who work in our office, which we have several of them.
That's a fair term.
There are kind lawyers, so let me make that clear. But, so yeah, a little bit about me, like everybody here, I knew, I imagine every single person in this room, from a young age, wanted to dedicate myself to some capacity of public service. Went to University of Florida for undergrad, joined the Navy, served for five years, wanted to continue public service, came back to school, the University of Florida. Realized I wanted to work primarily on climate policy and climate change issues at the national level was my goal, so I got three graduate degrees from Florida, which makes me a quad gator, which, you know, had a lot of debt that was just forgiven last year. So, and I did it intentionally to focus, and you'll see the connection to land use here, is I got a master's in business administration, I wanted to have a kind of a good economic background, economic policy, that works for the development of policy, as well as a master's in ecology, because it really, you know, to get, to really focus on climate policy at the national level, you have to have some type of science background, and then as well as the law degree at the University of Florida, where it was certified in land use policy and environmental law. So, there's a big overlap between those two areas. Out of school, my first position was hired with Senator Bill Nelson in the Senate to work on climate policy and be an advisor to him, as well as to work in several committees in the Senate. For practical reasons, namely my mom's health and needing to be closer to my mom, my wife and I decided to make Gainesville our home, and then I landed in this position that I love, and been here for 11 years. And so, there's this big overlap between, you know, I guess that was all to say, that land use policy and environmental sustainability issues, particularly climate policy, they're very much related. And so, which I think will be kind of clear, and I think commissioners have already experienced this, one of the two things that climate policy and land use policy shares is there's no, in the policy world, but known as intractable problems, great problems. And what that means is they share three factors. One is they're, they can be fairly complicated, with a lot of facets to them, a lot of drivers of why they're kind of a complicated sticky widget issue to work with. Two, they're long-term, so they have to very much focus on the long-term impact of policy and how, you know, change will develop in that area. That's already two strikes, well, let me just say the third one. The third one is they're often also controversial. So they're, you know, as I think as most people know in the city of Gainesville, they, you know, they can be very controversial with like the, you know, once a problem is recognized, developing, deciding what to do moving forward can be really difficult to move forward. Because of those three factors, often what happens nationally and locally is that the default or the status quo often is what results. To have any type of change is not the norm. That's been an issue, as anybody knows who follows climate policy, with climate policy, land use issues are the same. They, when you have those three factors are complicated, it's a long-term focus and they're controversial, making any decision becomes a super big move. And so, often what is the case is just the status quo prevails with little maybe marginal changes here or there. So, what I thought how I would focus on this presentation is it just, in the, you know, the issue of land use planning and policy within the city of Gainesville, really wanted to focus on these three things. What even is land use planning, okay? And then, why do we even think about it or do anything about it? And then finally, how, like what are the nuts and bolts of how you actually move forward in, you know, enacting policies from a land use standpoint? So, we'll begin with what is land use planning? And that's what it is. So, you can see there, it's the, there's a lot, I won't read the definition, there's a lot to dig into with what's with here, the definition of land use planning. Could spend hours going into individual components of what it is, but all to say, you know, it's, the three primary motivations of how to think about land use planning is around these three E's of sustainability, they're called, you know, from an environmental standpoint, equity, and the local economy. So those are the drivers of what it is, you know, even do as far as the city and land use policy. And the, this is maybe the take-home thing with this point here, is that, you know, maybe if there's one thing that would, you know, be good to remember from this whole talk, is that land use, setting land use policy is one of the strongest powers that you hold as a city commission. So when you think of even what is a city, like in the state of Florida, we don't need cities. By law, we have to have counties. Cities are just a conglomerate of people who over time, you know, develop some type of cohesiveness, decided to form a city to essentially serve, make decisions at the local level. And, you know, some primary functions of the local government are the typical ones people think of, like police and fire, public works, developing and managing roads and mobility, infrastructure, housing programs, different things. But, just in the city of Gainesville, which is roughly 65 square miles, keep in mind the vast majority of that, those square miles, is all private property. So there's a certain amount, a very small amount that is public property, city of Gainesville owned or county-owned, and roads and whatnot. But the vast majority is private property. The vast majority of that private property is residential property. And, as we'll see, the city of Gainesville and any municipality, you have authority to really regulate what happens on that private property, both in the short term and in the long term. So, that's an extremely powerful authority that the city of Gainesville holds, to really dictate up to the limits of the Constitution, of course, are legal limits of what the city can do, but it's a strong and broad power to govern what gets constructed where, how property can be used, you know, what it looks like, the form it has to take, the infrastructure that has to go around it, and what each property has to contribute to that infrastructure. So, so it's complicated, but it's also probably the strongest power that the city of Gainesville holds. So just keep that in mind, because that also makes it one of the most important aspects of being a city, to really secure a city, as this definition says, for present and future generations that flourishes according to those three principles. One other note that I did want to point out with this slide, important note with land use, it inherently, what land use does is it takes into account future generations when you set land use policy. Interesting to note is those future generations will never show up to a land use hearing or a land use meeting, okay? So, I think as everybody knows, land use issues can often be controversial with a room full of passionate people to voice their valid opinions, but future generations will just, they're not there, they're not at the table. So, that's a complicating factor, but it needs to be taken into account when, you know, when policy is set. So, and please feel free to stop and ask questions, you know, it seems to be a pretty informal atmosphere. So, okay, so then why, why do we do land use policy? That was the definition, why even do it? Just going to touch on like a couple of drivers of what drives that need to think about, you know, managing the city in this way, and then also some specific issues that land use planning actually address. So, with the main driver, it's just that people are coming, the population growth. This is just some data that kind of shows this area, but you can see how this, Florida, Alachua County, and the city of Gainesville are growing in pretty substantial amounts. Just a couple of figures, Florida is the third most populous state, and it now is currently the fastest-growing state in the nation. Gainesville's the 13th most populous city in Florida, and you can see how it has grown from 2010 to 2022, and then what it's projected to be in this ballpark in 2050. So, a couple of things to think about here. Well, one, first let me note that, you know, often this is inherently a college town, so the college population, you know, often gets talked about. What's interesting to note is that UF's enrollment has remained relatively steady throughout this time. So in 2012, it was around 50,000, both undergrad and undergraduate students, and the current enrollment is somewhere in the ballpark of 53,000. So you can see as a population is growing, this is, you know, keep in mind, it's not University of Florida students that are driving that, you know, Gainesville's growing in other ways. So, yeah, so maybe some of the main things to think about, given this population growth that we can't stop, is that, it is, and this is important, is that the city of Gainesville does not have the authority to stop change, okay? Doesn't have the authority or just the practical capability to stop change. What I mean by that is like the land use authority of the city and, you know, through its zoning or whatnot, it can't simply be used to say in case the city of Gainesville and Amber, you keep it as it is today, as we all know and love it today. And what, you know, what that means practically, you know, is like every yes vote, anytime there's a land use policy or a development application before the commission, every yes vote is managing and reacting to that change, but every no vote is also a vote for change. In the land use world, inaction is action. And the choice is essentially whether to proactively and wisely plan for the inevitable change that is going to occur, or to not do so. Some, you know, if there's a spectrum to, you know, proactively plan for change, to accomplish the three big goals of land use planning on one end, and the other end of the spectrum is just unplanned and, you know, just unintended consequences that happen from just not, you know, reacting to the difficult, you know, just the difficult reality of land use. I will tell you, on that end of the spectrum, just throughout the literature in our entire country, that leads to generally poor outcomes, okay? So when, when a city or the nation just doesn't react and proactively plan for its land use, either at a national or a local level, the outcome is just, it's just poor across the board. So getting in the spectrum closer to proactively planning for is obviously the goal of, you know, what a city wants to do. The next, these slides are just, this just shows like a visual representation.
Of course. Of course. I'm just curious about the correlation number. Does that conclude the number above the expected that is going to be related to climate change or energy use?
No, so...
Well, honestly, basic growth it looks like.
It is basic growth, that's the pull from Bieber, the hero of economic and business research, I think that's the acronym, but at the University of Florida, which, you know, is in the business of making population projections, and they've historically been fairly accurate. So I don't know if there are projections of whether they incorporate that or not, but that's a good question. So this is just a visual representation of how the state of Florida can change. We, the blue arrows point into Alachua County. And as somebody who grew up on the southeast coast, you know, as much as I love Gainesville, I always find it funny that we have, it's a giant peninsula with beautiful coast all around and all the fun things to do with the coast, but we, you know, land it right in the center of it, which again, I've grown to love. So, but that's, this was I think back in, let's say 2010, and then this is one scenario of what it could look like in 2070. So it just, you know, the red, if you can't see it, represents developed area, the green is protected area, and the rest is just everything else.
And that is definitely not the climate change performance.
Right, that's true. That is, that's true. And so there's different scenarios, the whole point of this study and analysis that was done was to kind of give different scenarios of if Florida statewide is planned wisely versus not, and the different outcomes that can happen, but it just, you know, I just wanted to put it on there just to show like the drastic way that the state of Florida will change. And that gets back into, you know, every decision made at the city of Gainesville level, you know, we're not an isolated function, you know, there's impacts that every decision that's made at the city level affects Alachua County, and affects the state of Florida, and vice versa. Everybody's kind of working together here to plan for the long-term of the state of Florida. So, yeah, that's what the slide shows. Okay, so this is just some, when you think of land use planning in general, the way kind of the academic literature points, you know, again, to the function of land use planning, is that at the end of the day, these are the five primary outcomes that could amount, the five most common outcomes from land use planning. And what that means is land use planning either fundamentally helps, like it says, or hinders these five things. Number one is environmental sustainability, okay? And you can read down the line, availability of different housing types for various living arrangements, stages of life, and economic means, housing affordability, income and racial segregation inequities, and then finally, the robustness of the local economy. Those are all, you know, there's rigorous analysis that shows the outcomes that cities have chosen, either, you know, at the city-by-city level or just across the nation, and how they affect these five implications here, from an environmental, let me just stop there, you know, the biggest one that everybody knows, exclusionary zoning, okay? That was discussed recently. What's important, just, you know, I just want to, you know, make clear what's important with that whole issue of what exclusionary zoning even is, and now I bring it up because that was a major land use policy change that was discussed recently. But it was often, you know, if you heard, you know, as you heard it discussed, it was often limited to number three, housing affordability. But, you know, just want to make clear that changes like that do not just, you know, the goal or the outcome is not limited to just housing affordability. It certainly affects that, but it, you know, affects these other components as well in substantial ways. So, yeah, and we'll run through some of these themes here as we move forward. So, two, so just wanted to focus on, you know, if you go back to this slide, you can see there's kind of a, you know, some of the biggest things that the land use policy touches on is environmental sustainability, but then also some housing issues. Just wanted to briefly touch on both of those. From an environmental standpoint, this gets into like the kind of the climate policy implications of local land use. This was a pretty groundbreaking analysis, somebody's busting into our meeting. But, should we let it in? Okay. So, yeah, this was a fairly groundbreaking study, I think it was used in Berkeley a few years ago, but what it did is it, it used what's called a consumption-based greenhouse gas inventory method, and it analyzed cities on a census block basis. And that's pretty, it was interesting because most greenhouse gas emissions analyses are done on kind of a generation standpoint, so it looks at like what is GRU, like what the greenhouse gases in GRU is emitting from their, you know, generation of electricity. And then when we use technology that's often, you know, say it's made in China, how much of carbon is being emitted in China? What this study did is it brought it to the end user, like the residents of the city, because that's where the greenhouse gases are, you know, was truly the driver. GRU only generates electricity, and China makes technology just because the end user has a demand for them, right? So this, it looked at cities from a carbon sustainability standpoint, focused on those end users, and this is what it showed, that they kind of take away, was that 30% of the carbon footprint abatement, so what that means, you know, if we have goals to address climate change, but that we have to nationally and locally and globally reduce our greenhouse gas emissions, 30% of that ability to lower our carbon footprint is from activities that are fundamentally, at least partially controlled by local governments. And then they went on to find that six variables, those listed, explain 90%, 93% of that carbon footprint variation. So these are the biggest drivers, in other words, on a city level of what, how effectively that city is addressing greenhouse gas emissions and environmental sustainability. And again, you can see some of the themes, we won't go into them all, but you'll see there's some, some housing-related issues, house, the home size and household size, population density, that was all analyzed just recently with the exclusionary zoning discussion. Carbon intensity of electricity, which, you know, not every city has its own municipal utility, the city fortunately does, because unlike a lot of cities, the city of Gainesville can kind of work on number three there. So, yeah, I think, you know, it was discussed, like I said, a lot in the easy discussions, but it kind of goes without saying now that, you know, the larger homes are, the more carbon intensive they are. Smaller homes take a lot of less materials that generate carbon, heating and cooling it is a whole lot less, higher population density areas, it's incredible how much less carbon those emit. Income's still a factor, if you look, just for an example, like downtown Manhattan, if you have, which in general is going to be much more sustainable from a carbon emission standpoint, but if you look at downtown Manhattan, especially area, say neighborhoods or buildings that have residents of lower income, they're going to be incredibly low relative carbon emissions per resident. As opposed, if you have the same building with the same number of residents, but they're high income, it's going to be much more carbon intensive, because the more money you have, the more we consume and emit carbon. So, all to say, there's, you can see the things that the city can control. This is just some particular facts from, from housing, you know, it's a housing snapshot of the city of Gainesville that was collected over the last few years by various institutions locally, including the city of Gainesville. But these are important to keep in mind, because this will inform housing policy as you move forward. And you can see, you know, the big one, which was discussed in easy, is that 63% of the city's residential land area is restricted to single-family housing. So, you know, we've talked about at length, so other types of housing cannot be built in 63% of the city, it's legally, you know, disallowed. 65% of that single-family zoning is all concentrated in northwest Gainesville. 80% of the city's housing units are either single-family homes or large apartment buildings. And what that means is there's a corresponding deficiency in missing middle housing, which is generally between two and four units, duplexes to quadplexes. There's a shortage of a certain number of housing units, particularly for rental units, as we see for folks who are making less than 60% AMI. Non-student renters earning less than 80% AMI are the largest group of cost-burdened households in the city of Gainesville. Those are disproportionately black and minority renters living on the east side.
Sean, let me ask, I don't quibble with any of these numbers, but how do we, particularly on the shortages, shortage of housing units and rental units for folks earning less than 60% AMI, how do we arrive at those figures?
That's a good question, the shortage of, that was, that came from...
Probably Schimper.
No, I think that was actually from a HUD analysis in the local Gainesville area, but Schimper has spoken with it as well. Their methodology for how they calculate that, I don't know. And I should, you know, and I will say, there was just very recently, an NPR article that was shared, where it was some relatively small nonprofit institution that tried to analyze the exact same thing, whether different areas were overbuilt or underbuilt, and in that NPR, well, it wasn't NPR, again, it was some small nonprofit doing the analysis, but according to their analysis, Gainesville, the Gainesville area anyway, had an overage of units, which was the first that I've seen, I don't know if Andrew could comment on that, or, that would be news to me, because everything else I've seen points to it's a shortage in our area. The methodology of how they determine, you know, what the current demand is, and how it's not be, you know, there's not enough supply to meet that demand, and how they, you know, how, you know, margin of error it is based on the units they come up with, I don't know, would have to look into that more. But what's important to keep in mind with that shortage too, is that is just a current snapshot again, so that doesn't take into account the population projection that, you know, will in fact grow. And so, yeah, so that's, you know, the, the, then one final point I want to make with this slide is, this, what this slide does is it largely points to the structural, the structural landscape of the city of Gainesville from a housing perspective. That's what land use policy addresses. Andrew just gave like a presentation at your previous city commission meeting about all the programmatic programs that the city of Gainesville is doing to address housing. Those, you know, largely what that is, is this funding, often that comes passed through through the federal and state government, some local GCRRA fund that, you know, is not an indefinite fund, some connect free, all those things that were presented last week, those, you know, if you think of economics from a supply-side, demand-side perspective, you know, those kind of, more or less, might be a bit of an oversimplification, but those focus on demand, the demand side of the housing issues in the city. So it's not doing anything to fundamentally change the structure of housing and what housing can be built, where it's, what it looks like, but it's just providing folks immediately means to work within the current structure. These are all more structural components that, that's what land, that's the difference of the programmatic elements of housing versus the land use side. So the land use side is again, the more long-term structural focus of where the city is versus where we want it to be.
So if we, just using current examples, if we're down 1,800 total units, and we added what will eventually be 500-plus units of housing on second reading last Thursday, e- even though...
Pardon? Those beds.
That was 200.
Oh, you're right, so 200, okay, so it was that, within two years, that ends up being done, and I know that the demand continues to rise, and so that 1,800 doesn't stay stable, but theoretically, that should bring that down by at least 100 or so, the shortage down. I'm not sure that it does, and that's why I'm trying to figure out what the, how we arrive at these numbers, because I don't think that adding 200 units really, really lowers the shortage that much, or improves the shortage that much.
No, it's a, it's a good question, particularly with that type of analysis and how granular it gets.
Yeah.
And you're talking, you know, again, any of those analyses, they're a snapshot in a system that's changing and in flux all the time, so they're going to inherently be ballpark figures.
Right.
The big principles to take away, which I think, you know, you just recognized, is like that the population growth is going to continue anyway, so even if you're kind of on par currently, again, land use planning is, you know, focuses on the long term and how to continue shaping our city to, you know, to achieve those goals. to, you know, to achieve those goals. And number of units is only one, you know. Kind of went through what are, all the other components that land use policy tries to get at. Just the strict number of units, you know, that might be one thing, but whether they're equitably distributed, whether, you know, there's different types of units and where there's a diversity of units that allow for, again, folks of different living situations and means. You know, there's a whole lot that goes into it and the units certainly is one component.
Okay. No, I think Sean was touching on it to your point. Let's say the number stays static. We could put out two thousand single-family homes, but it may not necessarily impact those thirteen hundred because it's still way outside of that AMI like window. So I think, I would like to know the methodology. I was trying to look up through HUD or Schimper and everyone I could find one with a quick look. But if we find the methodology, I think that's really helpful as we make future decisions just to see how that determination is made. And if we could do some of that math on the front end while we make those decisions. Because I think that the, the AMI of the household is going to be the biggest determining factor. I could, I could pump out million high rises if they're not within the window of affordability for any one family or use. These are all families of six people and they're one bedroom or studios. Doesn't help anyone. So I really like to know that methodology we could pull out at some point to try to apply.
Yeah, I think that's a great point. And for those who have, in 2021, I think what you're referring to the HUD bid of comprehensive housing market analysis, they only do it, I want to say, once every ten years or so. I mean, they go around to each metropolitan area and do these reviews. So ours happened to have been fairly recent. It was right in the middle of this whole discussion about zoning and was quite good. I mean, they separated it out into like apartments, but then also went down into the weeds of student housing, which they found had a point six percent vacancy rate, which I didn't know was even possible to even get that low of a vacancy rate. Like, there was interesting stuff that was not intuitive to me. There was, and there's some stuff that was intuitive, like the shortage of single-family homes, they really forecast as being one of the larger shortages as opposed to apartments. And the, I want to say that's on our, wait, on our website. There's a whole website of exclusionary zoning materials that has that HUD analysis. I would like to know the methodology as well because just looking at, I mean, a lot of times just looking at vacancy rates, looking at where rent is going up, that's where you can see where shortages are. There's a shortage of one-ones, you will see that vacancy rate and the, and the amount of rent people can charge for it. And just somehow figure out how we can see that so that we can say, well, if we're not building enough of these smaller units, like, is there a problem with our codes? Is there a problem with the economics? Or anything we can do about it, period? It allows us to sort of kind of be on the, like, they are trying to figure this kind of stuff out early. All right, so I think that's, and the one last point I'll just say with this slide is like going back to the difference of like, you know, the structural component of land use versus the housing programs. So I think the housing budget that Andrew just presented on this last Thursday was somewhere in the ballpark of eighteen million, okay? That the city is using to fund different types of housing related issues.
Can you say that again?
So the, the presentation that Andrew did last Thursday, what that was, what he focused on was the programmatic side of working on housing issues that the city is doing. That the budget, that yearly budget for fiscal year twenty-three, I think that was, was somewhere in the ballpark of eighteen, eighteen and a half million. And what that breaks down to is like, you know, I guess, I think, five to five and a half million of pass-through funding. That's for the ship programs, the home programs, the C.
C, ship, home department.
Now that we have a housing and development department, that big number is a little easier to find, you know, in a chart or graph of total city spending. In the past, I think we, even the people on the know may have had our time coming up with the number. But I, I mentioned that because it helped me understand, even though it's not all in one department necessarily, but like, it's a lot easier for us to identify that and say, no, no, we really do.
Yeah, several millions of dollars is super important, critical work, you know, as Andrew discussed on Thursday. The, the point I was just going to leave the commission with is, you know, there's, just for example, within the last few years, there are different development approvals that the city commission has authorized. One of the conditions has been a certain number of housing units. So at each unit roughly, you know, two and a half people on average or whatever it is. A certain number of those units upwards of, in the ballpark of seventy-five, that have to forever be paid at a certain level of income. If the city were to just do that on its own and just develop that many units, it would be tens of millions of dollars. And it's just an example of how the city's authority to leverage the private property and the private financing and, and just the private capital potential of the majority of our city is orders of magnitude higher than what we can just spend via tax dollars, you know, as important as that is. So again, you know, don't forget the structural component of housing and land use. Okay. So now we get into the real fun stuff of just the nuts and bolts of how the city of Gainesville and as a commission and staff, how land use policy is implemented, largely per state law. So we'll spend any time here, but just know, you know, all of the authorities, the state of Florida is vested in home rule localities. So the city of Gainesville does enjoy home rule, sometimes preempted by both the state and Latchua County. I don't know if anybody in the county would hear this, but, but that's, you know, they do preempt us occasionally. But nonetheless, this, you know, the city commission does enjoy pretty expansive, again, authority to enact land use regulations. How you do it is largely dictated by state law. And this beautiful slide, and I should say, you know, when Andrew, Andrew hurt my self-esteem earlier today when he said my, my presentation is not visually stimulated, which, and I think he was really focusing on this slide. And I am not a graphic designer and this is the best I can do. But what this, what I tried to encapsulate is the entire, again, nuts and bolts of land, how land use planning gets done at the local level per law. So this is all the legal components from state and, 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 or courts. So it is important to focus on, you know, these seven components. What, some of the big things to think about is, you know, I tried to draw a funnel there. And what that represents is in these seven stages of decisions that have to occur before any property owner can actually dig in the ground to do something, okay? And what the funnel represents is the city's authority and discretion that the city commission and then, you know, other boards have as those decisions are made and those levels of development approvals are given. And so if you look all the way up at the top, it's, everything's governed by like our local constitution of land use policy, which is our comprehensive plan. And that's, comprehensive plans are required per state law. Every city, every county has to have land use, comprehensive plans. And under that is where a city assigns land use categories. So the comprehensive plan, you know, dictates and sets these high-level policies of what the city wants to achieve as far as long-term planning in the city. The land use categories are when the city assigns certain particular categories to individual pieces of property. Under that is the land development code, number three. The land development code kind of puts the meat on the bone, so to speak, of the comprehensive plan. And again, similar to number one, number three just establishes a lot of the, you know, our land development codes, something in the ballpark of this thick. So it establishes a lot of the regulations of what can be built where, what it has to look like, what developers have to do. And, but it's, it's just in general, it hasn't been applied to any specific property. Number four is when the city assigns zoning categories to specific properties, okay? And so that's where you start applying the land development code, which again is what it does and implements the comprehensive plan to specific pieces of property. Number five is just subdivision. Also, you know, these plats, the city commission by law has to get those. But that's just when you have, you know, a certain parcel of property and a developer wants to, to cut the property up into smaller units of property to make it easier to convey and sell to final users. And that, when the developer does that, has to comply with the land development code. After a plat's been established, then you get down to the site plan level. That's the actual engineering schematics that come into the city that, you know, is the final product of what somebody wants to do with their property. And that's where it's actually laid out and given to staff, the very technical, to ensure, you know, after review that it meets all the regulations that are above, are above it in one through five. And then the very last level is the building permit level. So that's where the building department in the city of Gainesville actually issues building permits, which gives the green light for contractors and everybody to come and start doing work, okay? So, you know, depending on how much level of detail you want to go into, I will just say some of the high takeaways here is you can see all the way to the right of labeled which decisions of the city are legislative versus right under that in four and five, which are quasi-judicial. The difference there is legislative decisions when the city commission makes a legislative decision. Again, this is what the funnel is trying to, you know, capture. But you are operating in the full breadth of your land use authority. Again, the only limit there is the constitution and, you know, some miscellaneous other things. But, but you're really operating in your strongest authority to establish land use policy. When you, and, and generally it's noted that it kind of applies to, to everybody. You know, it's setting kind of general policy that applies citywide. When you get down into the quasi-judicial elements of development, that is when you are actually applying the regulations that were set above and you're applying it to a specific property in a specific development. Why it's important, you know, the reason it's important is because you have to make, you have to put on different hats for those decisions. The legislative decision, if you don't like this for any policy reasoning that you can think of, your personal preference as being elected officials in the city, you have the authority to do that. You can, you can base your vote and base your opinions on, on, you know, your just most informed opinion and as broad as discretion. When you get down to that quasi-judicial portion, it's not, and this is where certain cities get in trouble. Luckily, not the city of Gainesville because we, you know, try to, you know, do some of ours like this and whatnot. But when it gets to the quasi-judicial portion, you have to base your decision on what's the correct criteria. Basically, there's criteria that you have to make your decision by. And staff, in any, in any quasi-judicial decision that is before the commission, staff will let you know what that criteria is. And at the hearing, that's why it's called a hearing, quasi-hearing, it's kind of like court. But the affected parties will present evidence, you know, like just different bits of evidence. And what they are doing, the profit starts with the property owner, the developer. They present evidence to say, okay, this is the criteria for whatever it is we're trying to do here. So say number four, they're trying to get their property rezoned, okay? This is the criteria for rezoning. This is all the evidence we're presenting that shows you we've met that criteria, okay? And then after that, if they, if they've met their burden, the city commission doesn't have the authority to just say, you know what, like it does on those higher levels, doesn't have the authority just to say, I don't like this, I'm going to vote no. You, you have, if they've met their burden of presenting evidence to meet, that meets the criteria, by law, that they are entitled to that, to that approval. The only reason that where the city would have authority to not is either if they didn't meet their burden by presenting evidence and this, somehow there was evidence presented that counters what the developer and the property owner presented. So there was evidence that weighed against what they're saying to the extent that one of the applicable criteria were not met, okay? So that's when, all to say, with quasi-judicial decisions, you have to be very careful about how the city commission makes this decision. Because if they present competent substantial evidence and it meets the criteria, they're entitled to that development approval. Staff really kind of helps the commission in this, you know, this capacity because it gets very detailed, often very quick. And staffs, the planning staffs, their recommendations carry a lot, a lot of weight, okay? A couple of quick things just to touch on there. Staff, they do provide expert opinions. So remember that the whole standard is competent substantial evidence and then whether it meets the criteria. Staff's opinions and their testimony and the, the materials they provide in your backup, that is competent substantial evidence, okay? As opposed to the general public. The general public, you know, often the general public doesn't even, you know, legally need to be given, they, they don't have the due process rights that affected parties have, which would be, you know, the developer and the property owner and then certain other affected parties that are, could be impacted to a higher degree than just the general public in the city, okay? And so due process rights are given to the affected parties. Quick hand way that we manage that is if you're given a letter of notice that you could live within four hundred feet of what's happening, we grant those as affected parties status, okay? So they're given due process rights and, you know, and across the board cities and including the city of Gainesville, we also allow just the general public to speak at public comment, okay? But just the general, generalized statements of, you know, I live over here and there's just too much traffic and I don't like this development. It's going to be, it's going to impact flooding on my property, you know? Just generalized opinions, that is not competent substantial evidence. But if they provide like, oh, I have an engineering report and in this, you know, certified expert's opinion is going to do such and such, that could be competent substantial evidence. So you have to be careful, like, you know, you know, there's actually case law in the state of Florida that says zoning, so again, level, what was it, level four there. Zoning is not a popularity contest. That's, that's actually stated in Florida case law. So, so yeah, that's just moving down there. There's a, you know, the line I drew was by right. That was a big topic of discussion at the, at the commission level. And in what, you know, just very briefly, just what that means is the one through five are discretionary decisions. Even quasi-judicial are discretionary, but again, it's more limited because you have to apply evidence to the criteria. When you get down to six and seven, it's, it's more of a by-right, just administrative decisions. Sometimes they're quasi-judicial, but generally they're administrative, which means, which means the level of discretion is so constrained that there really is no room. It's just, it's more of a litmus test, okay? So, you know, you're not allowed to have any more than thirty units. How many units, thirty, you know, proposing to develop, twenty-nine? Okay, you're, you're good. There's no discretion really there. So that's what by right means. Often that gets kind of characterized in the public of, you know, we don't, this by right decision kind of takes the voice away from the public. But that's just a function of the, you know, Florida law for one, but also just the practicality of, once you get down to a certain level of where there's just no discretion, there's nothing really to debate, that's when, you know, it's known as by right.
Sean, another question.
Yeah.
So down there at site plan and building permit where it's by right, these are administrative. I don't know about Florida, but I know in some other states, they've identified even those steps as some particularly time hangups. And some state legislatures are moving to, to literally limit time in those stages because they think, or at least they perceive that it's not being done administratively, that a bunch of discretion is happening at those stages. I don't know about Pasadena, whose current bill, whether, in the state senate, whether it handles any of this. But I know some other states have focused on this area and the state is starting to give timelines in order to make sure that it is done, you know, with, with, I don't want to say less discretion, that's the wrong word, that they are not using, you know, discretionary opinions at that stage.
Yep, that's right. And even in the state of Florida, every couple of years, there's like, the legislature will add shot clocks, we call them some type, that, that essentially assigns for any of these decisions, but particularly the lower, more discretionary, or, you know, ones with less discretion, assign local governments, like you have, you only have this amount of time. And if you don't get it done within this amount of time, it's just going to be deemed by law an approval. So there, that is pretty common at the, you know, at the legislative level. Also, I will say, you know, one of the big policy focus issues that you see even at the national level, including, you know, started with the President Obama's administration, was to really cement and be clear with like, what are the by-right administrative decisions? Because it recognized, you know, I mean, the public certainly should have a voice at the table about how the city of Gainesville grows and develops and establishes its land use policy. But that is, you know, levels one through five is fundamentally where that gets done. Those all involve the public. And in fact, they're the, you know, starting from the top, which is the most important, working its way down, that is where the public's voice has the most impact. By the time you get down to like, again, a site plan level, that's, there's not going to, you know, the public, something might come along where people, you know, get passionate for or against a particular development. The problem is by that time, there's very little discretion at all, if at all, regarding the decision. And so it's not a good time to really involve the public, to give them the most voice. That happens in the top stages.
Sean, just to add to that. In Florida now, basically four down to the seven have shot clocks. So zoning categories, any zoning process from, we have like an application from a private party, it needs to be processed within 180 days. It needs to be processed within 180 days. Building permits, that timeline is even shorter, with even more prescriptive time by which the city has to like, can hold our review process down. So like, we have to basically, our building department is, because we try to turn things around quickly, our building permits, we meet state law, but they get down to like, even how long each review cycle is. So it's, and that's continuing to, to each, as Sean said, each legislative cycle, they're trying to sort of, you know, put more, more prescriptive constraints on local governments.
We, so previously, if I recall, every site plan was administrative. Recently, there was a change, right, for a certain multifamily to become quasi judicial? That's right. That was a big political, one of the many land use issues of the last several years. But that's exactly right. Previously in the city of Gainesville, well, at least as of like 2017, when our land development code was, you know, redrafted. And just a note on that, you know, when I came to work with the city of Gainesville, was working on the pre-2017 land development code. And when, you know, getting back to some of the earlier slides, that land use policy happens very slowly, sometimes unfortunately, because it's an intractable problem. That land development code prior to 2017, you know, just, it was a mess to work with because it was largely just kind of dusty regulations that were largely untouched since like, you know, decades and decades before that. So 2017 was like this, maybe the first rewrite of the land development code ever in the city of Gainesville. And at that point, it did, following national, you know, guidance from different administrations and just kind of the way the land use policy has, you know, moved throughout the country, it did establish that all site plans would be by right administrative decisions. However, and I'll talk about this in a second, but there, it became, you know, there was some criticism for that. And so the city commission decided to, with certain levels of site plans that are above a certain threshold, to make those quasi judicial again. So to allow the public to come and speak on it. And, you know, as Commissioner Willis just mentioned, there's, you know, that's a policy decision, and there's pros and cons to that, very real pros and cons.
But that doesn't change the fact that either you meet the requirements or you do not.
That's correct. And that's one of the cons is that, I don't want to say it often can present false hope, but if somebody's really, you know, up in arms about a development, which would happen. So, so that's right. It's very, at that level of development, as opposed to kind of the top more discretionary, they're very like programmatic, rigorous regulations. And the public, you know, whether it meets it or not, whether you give it a quasi judicial hearing or not, it still has to be approved if it meets those. And so, again, that's what just gets back to the public's voice. The higher up you go in this threshold, the more voice that involving the public is more just powerful for the general public.
Right, so one through three.
Right.
Comprehensive plan policies, land use categories, and land development regulations, those are, and this was, when we did all this a few years ago, really helpful to me, to get that dividing line between where we can just come up with different ideas, where we take lots of public input about whether we like it or not, whether it meets the goals of the community or not. But once we get past number three, there's a checklist.
That's right.
And if, if something meets the checklist, and we as a commission say, no, you can't do that, then we should expect to be sued.
That's right. What maybe could be helpful, I always find real world examples are the most helpful. And if anybody's been paying attention to land use issues within the city of Gainesville the last few years, maybe this will help. So starting from the top, if you recall, there was a, it became fairly controversial, a decision regarding a parcel that's right next to the suburban heights neighborhood in northwest Gainesville, okay? So that currently, that allows, that property, I think just by right, allows for an office strip mall type development, okay? The property owner approached the city and wanted a comprehensive plan change. So level two right there, okay? Wanted a comprehensive plan, land use category change, because what the property owner wanted to do was to build, rather than just office, they wanted to incorporate some commercial uses. One of the commercial uses was going to be Starbucks with a drive-through, and that became a lightning rod amongst the public, and showed up and was just voiced, you know, that they didn't, you know, their opinion on. The commission denied it after kind of some other stuff that happened. The commission changed it in one of the, kind of a big residential building with commercial on the bottom. And the developer kind of was working with the commission. But when all is said and done, the city commission denied that application. Now, that was again at the second level there, legislative, where the city commission had full legislative authority to do, again, what the city commission saw was fit. And so there was no, like, applying evidence to criteria. It was just like, the city commission didn't like it, denied it. And it's on strong footing when they do that. So if there's a legal challenge, it's almost, you know, again, through the advice of the city attorney's office, it's going to be very defensible in that level, okay?
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, I just asked, Sean, at what point does the state's review of the comprehensive plan policies or land use categories come into play? For example, with exclusionary zoning, we had to submit to the state.
That's right. So that is level two. So when the, you know, the comprehensive plan is established, and then the level two is where, so there were some exclusionary regulations that were adopted for, in the comprehensive plan. But then it was established, you know, applied to certain properties within the city of Gainesville. And that all requires state review. And what the state is looking for is essentially, without going into too much detail, is just looking at whether the city commission's decision complied with all the requirements in state law, specifically chapter 163. And so they're looking at a very high level there, at, which involves level two on this chart.
I just wanted to insert it because this is a step that, you know, we have to.
That's, yeah, that's right. The comprehensive plan, which again is like the constitution of local land use, so that's one and two. One is just kind of set, remember, the general policy, two is applying it to specific properties. That is all kind of, involves state review, often. If it's, sometimes some small ones, they don't. But it generally requires the state to look at it. And they're not looking at it, you know, they don't have authority to look at it just whether we like this or not. They're just looking at it strictly, does it meet the requirements in Florida statute? So a couple, just a couple more like real world examples. So that was St. Michael's, the St. Michael's property near suburban heights. That was at that level number two there. Moving down a little bit, let me think of, you know, you have an upcoming decision with the wirehouse property, okay? That is going to be at level four here. So that is, again, you can see going down the funnel where the commission's discretion is more constrained. At that level, you are applying, you know, this as I kind of laid out earlier. The property owner, developer is going to approach the commission in a hearing. This is for second reading, it was approved on first reading. Going to approach the commission, and all the evidence that was provided in first reading, if it means the criteria, then they're entitled to that quasi judicial approval, unless evidence to the contrary can establish that that criteria is not being met, okay? So that would be level four there. One final, let me give another one. Seminary lane, the seminary lane development, okay, in 5000. That involved the sixth level here, the site plan level. So what that was, was the city commission, or rather, not the city commission, that was an administrative decision made by staff. So that was before, seminary lane is kind of was the impetus to change site plan review to some quasi judicial, if it meets certain thresholds or not. But when seminary lane was reviewed, it was a site plan that was submitted for staff's administrative review. Staff approved the seminary lane development, because it met all the criteria of all, you know, one through five above it. And then that was legally challenged. You know, just to be candid, I would just say, like, as soon as it was challenged, just as a land use attorney knew, because of where it stands in the grand scheme of things with development, that the case is not going to be strong. It was challenged because people might have very valid opinions of what they don't, you know, their dislike for that development and what could occur there. But unfortunately for them, it was done at this, you know, lower level of development. It was a site plan they were challenging. And to be successful on a site plan challenge, I mean, is virtually unheard of. You know, the most that really could happen is it might, you know, you might point out that there was something relatively minor that was missed or, you know, applied incorrectly, and I'm talking like shifting a door over 30 feet or something, you know? Something in the grand scheme of things is not going to impact the development. By the time, I guess my point is, by the time you get to level six there, what could, what was legally allowed at seminary lane was already established. And so nonetheless, it was challenged with a lot of time, energy, and money spent, and then the city prevailed. And, you know, and that's just an example of, you know, how, as opposed to say, the St. Michael's, where the, you know, that was a ton of discretion up there. Another site plan was the affordable housing development that's behind the Newbury movie theaters. That again was a site plan. And that was, you know, a lot of people became passionate about that, approached the commission, and the commission decided to hold, that was again, another staff level administrative approval. But the city commission decided to hold a workshop to talk about it, because there was a lot of passionate folks. That was kind of an odd situation, because there's not a lot the city commission can do at that point. That, you know, it's, again, if it, if it meets the really kind of detailed prescriptive criteria, there's nothing the city commission can do to stop it, or, you know, not at the higher levels there. And so, you know, I don't know what the workshop amounted to other than, you know, letting people voice their opinions, which is important as well, and to be heard. But just from a strictly legal standpoint, there wasn't a lot that could be done. So, so yeah, so the nuts and bolts of how to do land use, this slide is trying to encapsulate the most important stuff.
So if we could get this more in front, what we've been talking about for the last 20 minutes or half hour here, in front of community groups, that would be helpful and useful to the community. And I don't know the best way to do that, because it's complicated. I mean, all this is complex. There's a reason people get master's degrees in this stuff, and it's complex. But people think that every, that anything that is issued by city hall, whether it's a land development code or a building permit, is something that the commission has discretion of. And clearly, we do not. But folks think that we're not listening when we tell them that shouldn't sail, and we have to issue a building permit. And so what I would like us to consider is how we can, I mean, not, you know, make a plan here or anything, but just on our own, consider how we get that information back into the hands of people who want to make change and who are likely to come to us and say, stop that building right now, and then be hurt when we say, well, we can't, it meets the criteria already. And I don't know the best way to get that back to the community. But it really is important that in a community like ours that wants to have a hand on what's being built, that we explain where that's possible.
That's right. I will say you're speaking to any planner's heart right there, because, because, you know, if somebody, you know, and they do a valiant effort of trying to do that, I've been here long enough to see the public outreach they do, including when, you know, the land development code was rewritten in 2017. It was an incredible amount of public outreach, a number of hours that they put in to do that. I will just say the fundamental difficulty with land use is that with this many steps, the higher you get, it's the more theoretical and again, long term it is. And for the general citizen, just speaking for myself before I was in this line of work, you know, if you told me about a comprehensive plan, and they're going to do something, whatever, I can see myself not really having a development on my radar until it got to the site plan level. You know, that's just natural. It's like, wait, you know, there's fences going up and some digging going on, like, what's going on? And but the problem with that again is that's where the public's voice is the least important, you know, least impactful. And so, right, to the extent that the public can really be brought in, and that planning is doing that right now with their rewriting, you know, a major update to the comprehensive plan. So all the way to the top there.
That is mandated by state law, be clear, right?
That's right.
That update is not something we just chose to do by ourselves, right?
No, this state law requires an update every such and such amount of years. But not to the level, you know, to plan's credit, not to what they're, what the update that's required by state law is just to really review your comp plan to see if it is in conflict with state law that has changed since the last update.
That portion is mandated that we look at it.
Correct.
So then, as we get, to go out and seek community feedback, it's something we choose to do.
That's right.
As we update our comprehensive plan.
That's community driven, and then, you know, the planning department here, you know, one of the major focuses on this new comp plan update is focusing on, it's going to equity. You know, it's trying to center around equity. And so that, you know, state law doesn't, that's kind of city of Gainesville driven, not just, does this meet state law driven, that's what the state will look for. And so, yeah, so that's, oh, and one last just practical note that I should mention, I skipped over it. But with, when you, conducting quasi judicial hearings, this is just practical advice specifically for city commissioners, you know, there, one of the due process requirements is that you have to be an unbiased decision maker. Doesn't mean you can't have political opinions. In fact, you know, it's, that's what you were elected for, is your political opinions. But in practical terms, one of the main things that means is you have to be really careful with what are called ex-party communications. And, you know, that's just a principle from the judicial branch that's brought over to our kind of like court hearings that we do. And what that means is, to be, you know, a fair judge under the law, the affected parties that you speak with, and again, the affected part, and we'll get to that in a sec. But when you're speaking to affected parties, so they're like the ones who are most involved in this case, you want to do it, you have to do it in the public hearing, you know, in the public's eye. You can't do it, you know, behind the scenes, you know? A judge that's trying, you know, hearing a case that's being tried, can't go behind the scenes and speak with the defendant. So everything has to take place at the public hearing. Now, so this is important. That just applies to affected parties, okay? But again, what affected parties are loosely, and they're just real quickly in the city of Gainesville, is of course, the developer and owner of a property, that's that issue. But also, we grant affected party status to anybody within 400 feet of that, okay? It doesn't apply just to the general public. So, you know, it's okay to speak to your spouses, or your friends, or whatever, anybody that's not an affected party, okay? So it's not that you have to keep a total lip about issues. But you can't talk to affected parties outside of the hearing. What that mainly means is, you know, when you're out in the public, or even in, you know, checking your emails, the two affected parties that will most likely want to talk to you are number one, the landowner and the developer. Sometimes they would like to grease the skids for development approvals and answer all your questions, you know, behind the scenes. But if it's a quasi judicial item, you can't do that. It has to be done in the public's eye. Besides the owner and developer, also affected parties who live within 400 feet. And again, that doesn't apply to the general public, but you have to be very careful if you're out in publics and somebody comes up to you and is like, what about, what's going on with this development? Here's my opinion, you know, are you going to know whether they got 400, you know, lived within 400 feet and received notice? Probably not. So it's a good idea, if it is quasi judicial, coming before the city commission, to be very careful with whom you speak outside of the hearing. You can, of course, welcome them to the public hearing to participate. Staff, you're permitted to speak with staff. Staff, the prohibition on speaking, you know, to the ex-party contacts, that does not include staff. So you can and should actually speak with staff to, because they're going to be some of the most informative folks to help you, you know, with what's the decisions before you. before you.
So folks who are regulars, who want to talk to us about every, every one of these levels, you'll figure out who they are and where they live and, I mean, what part of town they live in. So, and then you'll know kind of intuitively that they're not within four hundred feet of every single thing that we do. And that relieves a little responsibility of you. It is okay for this representative from Sierra Leone who wants to talk to you about wire houses or to talk to you because, because they live in Bradford County or whatever it is. It is okay to hear from them. And sometimes it's, it's difficult when you're new at this to know, it feels weird to say, "I can't talk to you about this same deal like they talk about." And the truth is, it is okay to talk to almost everybody except a group, people who live very close to, to what we're talking about. But that doesn't mean you shouldn't be careful about it, but it does, it is a little less scary than sometimes it might seem.
That's right. Sean, I think you, Sean, you want to talk about, I mean, it is a little bit, you have to be a little bit careful about talking to advocacy groups.
We always want to be careful about, about all of it. But I will say that our, our local professionals are really good about saying, "I'm not going to talk to you about the zoning piece of this."
Yeah, but let me speak to that because there's sometimes, I don't want to say it's a game that's played, but because theoretically this is allowed. But often, often you will have a decision before the city commission that has two of these levels at the same time, okay? So it'll be like a land use change, number two, together with a rezoning, say, number four, both at the same time. One's legislative, one's quasi judicial. That distinction of where, that's all per Florida courts, and it's a little weird. Most states kind of laugh at us of how we establish where the quasi judicial limit is, but it is what it is according to Florida law.
Florida man law.
That's right. That's Florida man law. So there will be sometimes, primarily the landowners or developers, that will, you know, because they have level two and four at the same time, they'll request time with commissioners and say, "Well, I just want to speak on level two," you know? We know we can't speak on the quasi judicial item. And, you know, theoretically, I guess that's allowed. Often there's so much overlap, even when staff gives their presentations at the hearing, you know, they'll often say, "We're not going to repeat everything, we just gave it for the land use level." So if it were me, my advice would be, if that was the case, just treat it all the same. Like if it's, if there's somebody who's an affected party, I wouldn't speak with them outside of the hearing, even when there's a land use component involved with it.
So I think that's a good real, real example of the way you just talked because I've had at least twice, I'm suspecting some of the people, some of my colleagues have had it, where we had two quasi judicial hearings and I have had groups and persons attempt to talk about it. And they said, "I'm only going to talk about the land use categories." I say, "You probably have the expertise to do that, I do not have the expertise to differentiate them. So I don't want to be sitting there and receiving information that's across two categories where I don't, I'm not sure, even though they may have quite, quite a range of knowledge beyond my own." So in that case, we declined, I declined to be on the advice of the city attorney.
Yeah, theoretically, you can thread that needle, but practically speaking, it's just, you know, it would be easier to say it for the public meeting.
My point is commissioners, I couldn't thread the needle. They are very capable of it, but I have not had twenty years of expertise and knowledge of studying this, so I just want to be as clear and ethical as possible related to those two kind of overlapping areas.
And if, that, it brings up a point, if you, if a commissioner does receive inadvertent ex-party communications, so somebody approaches you in Publix and is like, "This is bad, this is going to blah, blah, blah." And then you find out they live within four hundred feet or whatever, or through email or whatever the means of communication are, then how do you handle that? The city commissioners is at the public hearing when it, when it starts. In the beginning, you disclose what the ex-party communications were. So it's just to bring any communications that happened out of the public's eye into full disclosure. And the reason we do that is because Florida, there will be a presumption of prejudice. So if the, so if the city commission makes a decision and then it was found out that there were in fact ex-party communications, that decision starts off the bat with the presumption of prejudice if it's challenged in a court of law. So already, you know, the city attorney's office will be trying to dig ourselves out of a hole for the decision the city commission made if there's ex-party communications. So that's why I can want to avoid them, disclose them if they do happen inadvertently. And that was the main slide of like the nuts and bolts of how to do land use. And I think I'll just leave it there and, yeah, I think, let me just double check a little bit. Nothing else I want to, oh, I have anything else. Okay, I'll give this ten seconds. This, because we talked about everything, I just blew through. Yeah, and I can be happy to provide this presentation. Everything I just blew through is what we discussed because I want to leave that one beautiful slide I made up. So this is just, just really quickly, when you have development approvals that are before you, you know, development applications before you for approval, you know, you can, there's, I'm hesitating on how to communicate this. Sometimes the city commission, you can approve a development application or you can deny it. Sometimes what boards do, and there is some wiggle room to do this, you can approve with a condition. So you can say, you know, the one area, I think, rather than just full bore, you know, dichotomy of approve or deny, if you just tweak this one aspect based on the evidence that was presented at the hearing, then it will meet this criteria and therefore, you know, I move to approve with the condition that you do such and such. There is that capability with the city commission. You just have to be, there's again, a constitutional limit because those are what are called government exactions and you have to, you can't just do that full bore. Well, approve with the condition that you, you know, donate an ordered amount of money to affordable housing. You know, that might be pushing the limits of, of, you know, what is a proper exaction. And I won't get into the legal test, but that's what the city attorney's office will be there to kind of, you know, anytime this is before the city commission, there's always, you know, all the wheels are turning and trying to make sure that the train still tracks, so to speak. So, but just know there are limits to what type of conditions you would want to impose on property. This is just, besides that, this is, I used it for some other presentation, this is all the instances where the city does have the authority to take folks' private property. Starting with number one, a physical taking, I mean, you know, for, if it's a good public purpose, the city commission can actually take somebody's property, even if it's their home. In fact, I have a friend who lives in the county and the county's trying to do that to his, and his family live in a parcel and they want to use it for stormwater. So, you know, they're using a physical taking to take his property right now. Yeah, it's a, that's a good headline in the newspaper. It's not very, it's a, it's a hard sell. But we've done it before, the development of southeast Fourth Street that, that goes from Depot Park, you know, so it runs just on the east side of Depot Park. To reconstruct that street, the city needed about one and a half foot strip of property on, only on certain ones, certain pieces of property, just needed a little bit off the edge to complete those reconstructions. And so we did, we filed claims to, to take their property and then ended up settling and then, you know, and sold it voluntarily, but.
Depot Park itself?
Yeah, that's right. So it happens.
Too close to that property.
That's right. Regulatory taking, we have a case right now that's trying to, so that's another, the city can allegedly, it's so overbearing with its regulations that it has strangled out all reasonable use of a property. And there's a case right now that the city attorney's office is litigating on number two there, that city's rental regulations have amounted to a regulatory taking. Florida Board Harris, that's just different applications of a statutory takings claim that's different than, that, you know, the rest of them are kind of founded in the constitution, both federal and state. Florida Board Harris provides a little more beef, a little more, what's the word, like another weapon in the quiver of landowners to try to keep the city from doing certain things. And then finally, exactions, a little bit I was talking about earlier. But again, that's, you know, I don't expect you to know that off the top of your head because the city attorney's office will help, you know, guide those issues as they amount.
People will throw around the Board Harris thing all the time. People have no idea what they're talking about. Every other time we do any kind of land use, I think somebody will throw around the Board Harris. Don't be scared by it.
Right.
Most of, most of four is what we all talked about with the sidewalk mitigation program. That's an exaction. That's an example of an exaction.
That's a good example of one, you know? Yeah, I could talk about it for a few minutes, Bill Sperry. So, yeah, I think that concludes, I don't know if there's any questions or.
You should have had Forrest for your question. Forrest, three.
And I think Forrest has another hour and a half to give.
I was planning on two hours.
Okay.
No, he's okay with that. All right. Now, thanks, Sean.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sean, you're not staying?
Oh, I am. I'm going to go to the, Peter, yeah.
Nice to meet you.
Sean covered a whole lot of what we've got on our planning slides here, so I will not go through all of them again. And Sean really nailed a whole lot of, obviously, that big high level and going down into the nuts and bolts. So what I think I'll stick to or focus on a little bit more is the, more of the practice and profession of planning. And I'll go in the presentation sort of the really high level of planning and then zoom back down into a little bit more granular for what the heck are we actually doing in our city right now? And then I'll probably zoom back out and zoom back in. And that's actually something that planning really does a lot of times. And you'll see that, you know, in planning, you can have big broad planning or you can have really, really technical experts that are getting down to, you know, something specific like transportation planning or environmental planning. So also sometimes it can be hard to figure out like what's on planners' minds, right? Why would we have, you know, Wizard of Oz on this front slide? But planning really is, you know, trying to find the Emerald City. It's what are you doing? We all have our own idea of the Emerald City. What is the best city? And that's really what planning is. It's getting together with everyone with all of their myriad of ideas for what planning is to try to make this perfect city. There we go. So like I said, planning is big, is a big practice, but it can also get very small. So you can see we've got a lot of different real specializations here, economic development, environmental planning, growth management planning, which really Sean spoke about a lot with the population projections and things like that. What is cool about the profession of planning right now is it really in a lot of ways started off as that big picture, how do we plan for a city? But now there is a lot of specialists and specializations. Another cool thing is that other specialists are discovering planning. For example, public health has really discovered in the past ten years or so that there are a lot of things with our health that are predetermined by where you live and your zip code. So that nexus, that connection between public health and planning is becoming more and more important. So why? Why do we even do this? And Sean spoke to this some already. It's to plan for the future and it's to maintain and improve our quality of life. And that maintaining and improving is really having that constant conversation with each other. Everybody that's trying to find the Emerald City, what does it look like to them? What does our city look like in the future? And again, as Sean says, what do we think the city should look like or will look like for people that don't have a voice yet for our, for our future, for our kids? And you can see actually up here in the top, a couple of very intrepid city employees teaching some kids about planning here through a game. And actually, this is one of the metaphors that I like to use for planning. So if we're trying to come up with the Emerald City or, or, you know, this big idea, it's really sort of the game that we're playing. You know, all of us are trying to come up with across the table from each other, how are we going to have fun? How are we going to work at this game? And as we get to how do we do that, our comprehensive plan is kind of like the packaging or all the cool tools and figurines and stuff that's in the box that makes it look really cool, like you want to play a game. And then our land development code is actually rules. It's the rule book, it's how you move space by space. So in a probably a more complicated way to put that is this slide here. So I don't have a pointer, but I'll go ahead and just walk. But of course, planning is probably should be on top, but can start with community, our elected officials, the citizen boards. And this planning is always going on. It never stops. There's not a start or finish. It's a constant thing that happens and we're all always playing the game. And this one's broken down into these three separate groups here. So we've got our community, our citizens, but of course there's the market and the builders and what we normally call the developers, the entity that's going to actually build our physical city and get things done. And then the regulations that govern the other two, the citizens, ourselves, our elected officials, and then of course the developers and industry. You might recognize this slide. I'm not going to go through this slide because Sean did a great job, but I do have to say the blue is a lot nicer. Sean, do you like that? And the legislative and quasi judicial. I do now always think of Judge Wapner when I'm trying to think of is this legislative or quasi judicial. I don't know if that will help you guys in figuring out the difference between the two, but it helps me. Same for the quasi judicial hearings here. I think we see, you can see at least three people that are actually in this room right now also in the picture.
Oh, good.
Yeah? So we've got more of the slides on takings here, same slides that Sean went through. And so like I said, also a lot of these next slides Sean went over a lot, so I may be able to just kind of breeze through here. Planning officials, of course, are those that are making these planning decisions. And that can also include some of the boards. The city plan board for special use permits can act as this final authority, as the planning official. So that process for the special use permits, you heard Sean talk about the land use and then the zoning. The special use permit process is there are some cases where the city has said that this use deserves a little bit of extra scrutiny. This use, this particular request needs a little bit more advice put behind it. And in those cases, that goes to your city plan board that of course you all elect to make that decision for the cases of special use permits. So the comprehensive plan, we talked about that some. Again, that's sort of like the constitution or like I said, it's this big broad idea, big broad goal for what you're trying to do as a city. For ours, it includes all of the elements that are required by the state law, but in Florida, you are also allowed to add things to your comprehensive plan for what you might think is important as a jurisdiction. So for the City of Gainesville, we have a couple of elements that are not required in addition to all the required ones. And those are cultural affairs and historic preservation, the schools and facilities and that's, and the public schools and facilities. All the rest of those are required, that we address them and put forward policies and goals and submit data to support our policies and goals that are in these elements. And so those, sort of the broader or biggest element, if you will, is this future land use element. As Sean said, really land use stretch a lot, a lot of what we do. But it is only that one part of the comprehensive plan. So even though this land use element is its own sort of standalone element and is co-equal, all of those other elements speak to these specific fields, if you will, or different things that the city has said is very important. And all of those elements are supposed to work together in tandem. They're supposed to be congruent and coherent. And sometimes that does not happen, but that's what we do as staff. When you discover that or when you as commissioners find that this is not really working with our vision or this is not working with the vision that we have in other elements, let's work with staff to correct that and bring it into overall compliance. You'll hear that of course in our presentations. So for what we're doing now, the update to the comprehensive plan, we are embarking on this rewrite like, like we said, but we're not doing it in the way, one, that's required and two, that does not follow the typical format or formula that comprehensive plans normally. and two, that does not follow the typical format or formula that comprehensive plans normally follow. So you saw on the last slide, very text-heavy, starts with goals, really, really broad vision, you know, things that sound really cool and great, more maybe like the poetry. And then it gets down into more details for the objectives and the policies, a little bit more detail for how you get things done. But as you probably feel yourselves, it's not really accessible to a whole lot of people other than planners. Not very many people are going to sit down with a comprehensive plan and read text, 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 text. No objective, no difference between policy, objective, goal. What does that mean for my elected official? How are they going to read it? So we're really trying to completely rework the document itself and how it is read and absorbed by every, by commissioners, by staff, and by citizens. So obviously, for one, we're going to do a lot more imagery. And we've been working with communications and huge thanks to our planner, Nate Chan, for really pushing a lot of the graphic design for some of our comp plan update. And we're going to try to make this a lot more digestible and do this in a way that isn't just a document itself, but also has a digital representation and is presented in several different formats. Most important is that our comprehensive plan update is focused on equity. And that is not a focus that comprehensive plans typically do anyway. And that is the, again, the most important thing. As a planner, it's extremely exciting because this is something that we get to do to be on the cutting edge of planning for the whole country. And working in equity, working in the equitable frameworks and equitable policy into this overarching guiding document is our goal for the future and something that's very exciting to us. So again, the land use must be consistent with the overall plan. And we're going to go through a couple of slides here to just go over the basics of land use and zoning, which Sean went through. I do want to go over what it looks like on our maps because you'll see that this is a lot of what people use to, you know, find their own home or if there is a project going up, they're trying to figure out what does that mean and where is it going to go? So these different colors correspond to land use types. And we have these maps that are available to the public on our website. The yellow is single-family. The green is our conservation. Purple is industrial. The red is the commercial. And then we have little, you know, smaller gradations of those colors that tell you a little bit more specifics and detail. But you can probably start to see some of the features here that you recognize from our city. That red corridor is going to be Main Street. And then as it leans, you know, over here to the west, that's 441. You can see everything to the west there is very yellow. And that again is the single-family land use. So what goes with this land use and zoning? And now we're really getting into some planner nerds here. What do all of these acronyms mean across the land use and the zoning? We don't need to get into all those details, but for the planning side, we know that some land use only really makes sense with some of the zoning. So if we have a land use that says, "Single-family houses are allowed here", the only zoning that goes with that is RSF 1, 2, 3, and 4. Those are the single-family zoning districts. So very similar for conservation, what you think of as, you know, your nature parks, there's only some zoning that can go with a nature park and that's the conservation or public service zoning, where you're making a park or a nature park. And this, the land development code, again, this is the rulebook. This is how you play the game. This is how you get to make the Emerald City. This is, this is how you get there. We can talk about how Emerald the city is, but this tells you how to get there, how to follow the Yellow Brick Road, who to go with, and things along those lines. And the land development code is really where you get those, the questions from people, from citizens, from, you know, non-planners. It's how, where can I put a fence? Am I allowed to have an addition? Can I have a pool? Is my neighbor allowed to do that thing? Because that is really ticking me off. What about those other neighbors that are way over there? Are they allowed to do that thing? You know, how many chickens? Can the chickens crow? Are you allowed to have horses? Those are the ones that we get. And those are, in sincerity, in sincerity, are the ones that make our job more fun because the other part of the job is just the tables and acronyms. And again, you know, our regulations address these, the important things, but the on-the-ground things, the traffic, the signage, how do you divide your property? What does your building look like? How much glass on the front of it? Which way is the building oriented in some cases? And staff reviews all of these and reviews all of these requests. And not just planning staff. For each of these, the planners are the main lead coordinators for all of the staff in the city to pool their subject expertise into each one of these projects. And we have a management system that allows us to do that, track it, put dates, times to it, so we can actually follow these things through the process as they move. It is on our website and, well, it's linked from our website. But most of the jurisdictions in the country now, if you don't know, are on a website called munico.com. You can look at it by state and jurisdiction, and it's very searchable. You can even look backwards in time to old versions of the code. It's very, very helpful and very useful even to us. So these are the tables, a couple more tables. This is what you would get pointed to if you were a property owner and you're trying to find out what can you do on your land use. So you would start with that land use. Now you've got your zoning. You're looking for your zoning. And the zoning and land use combined tell you what uses are you allowed to do. So if you've got one of these MU1, you'll go down the list here and you see if it's P, it's permitted. If it's got an S, it goes to that special use permit process. So that's one that would go to the plan board and not be by rank. There's categories. And uses, and it reads left to right. And so again, this is the zoning map that goes along with that land use map. Slightly different, but the colors are similar to show you that they are related to the land use. And you can see on this map it gets more, more colors, basically, because it's getting more detailed, telling you about the specific uses that can go with these specific properties. And so we've got multiple kinds of zoning. The traditional zoning, this Euclidean zoning, is really what you think about more like SimCity or maybe games like that, that you have a separate store over here and a house over here and schools over here and industry over here. That's the traditional way. It's a, it's a, an old way. And what is more modern is moving, of course, to mixed uses being in one place. Well, now that you've mixed these uses, it gets a little bit trickier or more complicated for how do you protect or buffer or mitigate conflicting uses with each other? And so one way to do that is to switch to what's called form-based code, which really looks at more of how is, how do the structures on a site guide or dictate the use of the site? Rather than trying to specifically think of every kind of conceivable use or activity that a business owner or a property owner might have, we can go now to say, this is the kind of city or environment that we would like in this area. And whatever businesses go in there, within reason, is going to be okay with us. The one that I always think of is our businesses locally that are the aerial artists. And we took a long time to try to figure out what, how do you classify the use for the people who teach you how to swing on a trapeze and use, you know, gymnastics rings and bars and things like that? So you go through that table, the planners wrote, you know, back in the eighties and they had not ever thought that that would ever be a viable business. But it is, and we needed to try to find a place where that would work. So if we use those tables in the traditional way, that use is never going to show up. And some planner may say, that use is not on my table. You don't get to do the business. We don't do that anymore. We have more of a flexible use for our tables. And largely, this form-based code, which goes heavily into those transect zones, really deals with a lot of that for us, rather than on a use-by-use basis, us trying to decide if it's safe or practical or not. Here's Sean's funnel, I think. Is this the same kind of funnel here, Sean? No, this is more of a historical funnel here for the traditional zoning. But I'll go through this pretty quick here. And you can see this form-based zoning is really intended to have, if you, I remember going to Epcot and they had a picture of, you know, their Emerald City. It's the spike in the center and then flattens out to the sides and it's a really big radial. That's really what form-based code in a broad way is trying to do. You have your outskirts of your urban area that's less dense and you have your interior of your urban area that is that city, that Emerald City of the future. This is our transect zone code that guides some of that. If you really want to get into the nitty-gritty of how this form-based code moves the buildings on a property, you can go through our code here and it will let you know. And really shows you that articulation between the less dense and the more dense in the center. And really, it's focused on that relationship between the pedestrian and that streetscape and the building. So how do you move through space in a city? You know, all of us don't own the properties, but we do move through public space. And all of us as citizens work together for how do we want our public space to look? So in doing that, we, of course, talk about that street that we all share, but also that streetscape and frontage of the buildings that we all share, even though we may not own that building or that property. Again, here's a little bit of discussion over the traditional and the form-based. And generally, from the planning perspective, that traditional zoning encourages sprawl, encourages car dependency, it strains the infrastructure because it is separating. You know, if you've got, your house is over here and your schools are over here, then you have to drive or find a bus or something to that effect to get there. Well, now you're stressing the roads, you're using gas, you require a stoplight, you require something else, you know, a crosswalk that goes across another street that also has another person trying to get to do what they're doing. It's a strain on emergency services, again, because they're having to travel to many different nodes to provide their services rather than one. And that form-based code really works to try to alleviate a lot of that. And it also works to encourage that mixed use and diversity of uses, including in housing types. So we have a lot of tools on our website and a lot of them are GIS-based. And we have a lot of mapping tools on our website. I won't go through each of them because we do have a lot. But if you do have any needs for data, mapping, things like that, sustainable development, has a tool on our website that has many different layers of different data sets that you can cycle through, compare them to each other. And of course, if you can't find what you need, you can call us and we can usually pull up something. Yes?
Just real quick, if I can't find something, let me, I'm just zoomed out too far and I should zoom in closer because it might be too much data on too many things, like 13th or University.
Yes.
Zoom in closer because there's just so much happening.
Yeah, that's a really good point. So the layers, in order to make it actually even load, only show up at certain zooms. So if we have this parcel and there are thousands of them, when you're zoomed all the way out, it doesn't turn on so that we can actually still see the map. And then as you zoom in, you'll see the parcels start to show up. Thank you. That's very important. It happens to us all the time.
And I will give a shout out to the county on one thing. If you go to mapgenius.illachuacounty.us, the best zoning map of our area. I think they won some awards for it, but it solves a lot of those problems. The, I wanted to ask about the transects. I noticed we have a bunch, my understanding is originally the idea was that we would zone the city through transects and it would kind of be, that that would be part of the zoning. I understand sausage making and different things occur. But then we still have some that seem like, like urban mixed use. We just did a zoning change on, but then is going through the illachua county map genius. Recently have things in there like corporate park is a zoning category, business industrial, business office. Is there any thought as to what, are we comfortable with those still being in our, in our zoning and with our plans? Is there any thought about how, about moving those out or what is our?
Yes to both of those. So they are sort of artifacts, zoning, if you will. Some of those designations we no longer use, even though they may still be assigned to some properties. But rather than the city changing the zoning, which could be its own, you know, process and could have its own legal ramifications, we can still keep that designation in the code and in the comprehensive plan and use it functionally while also not spreading, if you will. We can not rezone to corporate park, for example. So we don't, as staff, and we don't recommend switching or rezoning to these antiquated zoning districts because of that reason. And then over time, they will change themselves. So we could wholesale go and change the zoning for the property, but it has its own ramifications.
My question's related to that. And as I said, it's non-conforming parcels where, I don't know, maybe it's not much of a question, but, you know, we started zoning in the 30s and there are certain things that are built that technically, and we've laid zoning over that in essence, illegalizes an existing business home or whatever.
So it's a whole, I could do a day and a half on non-conforming. So there's non-conforming, there's legal non-conforming. We have non-conforming use, which is separate from non-conforming structures. There's a variety of code sections that all talk about what do you do when that happens and what applies. But yes, things can be made to be non-conforming. And in some cases, there are considerations there. What is that going to mean for the property owner? And then that can get back to some of the conversation about takings and exactions. Is that a regulatory takings at that point? If you change the zoning and now someone's building is legally non-conforming? We have a lot of different sorts of parameters for that. And there are some that are different for different parts of the property. So non-conforming signs have their own section of code. So if your sign falls down, there's only so much you can do about it. Thanks. Sure. So citizen participation, of course, extremely important. The biggest part of this really, as, again, as I said, making that Emerald City is something that all of us are doing together. We are all citizens all together. Those that are elected officials and staff, who are still citizens here, still working towards creating this city together. And what we are trying to do always within the planning department is find out what are these better ways that we can keep engaging citizens? You know, of course, through our notification requirements, advertising requirements for the different petitions. But what else can we be doing better? Our city website, our mapping tools, the dashboard that can have a variety of different data on it. What can we do to even link up with some of the other resources that are out there, either through Map Genius with the county or UF and Beaver? Just always trying to look for those, those new tools. And we've developed several in-house, actually, that help us find those areas really quickly around the property that then can give us quick address points and contact points so that we can notify both the property owners and the renters for, for any particular property. And we're sending out, we send out postcards rather than what we used to do, make letters and stuff them into an envelope and then mail them out. We've found that a lot of people, believe it or not, don't open envelopes that are labeled "City of Gainesville". But if you send them a postcard with a lot of bright colors, they look at it. And these are our ads. You'll notice, I did not do that on purpose. You'll see those in the Gainesville Sun. And we actually have started advertising in Main Street Daily News as well. We found that they actually had a broader circulation and they're cheaper and nice. The three, three that really matter. These are our public meeting signs. You've probably seen them around town. We have a couple of other colors for the different boards, DRB, Historic Preservation. And Sean went a little bit through our review process. I'll go through it really quick here. So for anytime you have an idea, you know, from the biggest developers down to mom and pop, we recommend, if not require, that they go to first step meeting. And those first step meetings are decision-level representatives from the bigger development review departments. So Sustainable Development, Public Works, GRU are at every single meeting. We pull in the building department when there may be specific questions about how do you do you build this building or what are my building code requirements? And then depending on the project, we'll pull in others to make sure that they're there to help guide people. And so these meetings can go all the way to, you know, working with, um, mom and pop or how do you have, you know, a bike shop to, you know, 12-story buildings that are going to have five to 600 units and how do you get stormwater, you know, on a half acre parcel? Then you, uh, those developers are required to do a neighborhood workshop. So they have to send out to the 400 feet around the property, notification that they are going to do this project and they are required to hold this meeting and talk to citizens first and foremost. And this is actually probably one of the most, if not the most impactful place for citizens to get involved in projects. I have seen many, many projects make fundamental changes at the neighborhood workshops because that's where the developer is forced to look you in the eye and shake your hand and either tell you no or yes. And a lot of them are happy to tell you, yes, we can put up that fence or put up that wall, put in an extra tree or move the, the parking lot so it's in a different way so the lights don't aim at your windows. This at the neighborhood workshop really is the best place for citizens to get involved upfront for projects. And that goes all the way to requests for a change to land use. So any of those decisions, all the way to the legislative, they will get a notification.
And for us, just to add, we did make some, uh, significant changes to the neighborhood workshop process last year in terms of what materials need to be provided, you know, the level of engagement.
Yeah, that's a really good point. So now also those developers are required to put together a report that sums up what happened at the neighborhood workshop and submit it as a part of their application. And the planners, as a part of their review, incorporate that, uh, feedback from that neighborhood workshop. So again, that's an immediate point where a citizen can put their input, the developer is required to put it in the report, that report comes to staff and staff sees the citizen input right off the bat.
This isn't, um, we didn't have to go through this, I guess, with the exclude, like we, we rezoned, of course, all the single-family zone properties and now we're going through the same process. We don't, that wasn't, there's not notification requirements on that.
Right. And because of the size of the area.
Yeah.
We didn't, we didn't send out, uh, postcards to every single person at the city and everybody at the legislature, that is, uh, would be a huge lift.
Yeah.
Uh, but yes, state statute, um, for, for requests from the city or of a size that affects a certain amount of area, give different notification requirements. And so then of course you can submit your application. And as I said, you know, we go through our development review process and we work with the variety of departments, including over at the county when appropriate, um, to get you to your development permit. These are the levels of review. We've recently added a category. We were finding that, you know, we have building permits and this sort of goes back to some of the state requirements and the shot clocks that Sean was talking about. We have building permits that are very specific, what can be applied to them and the time that goes into them. But then we also had our development review threshold that we were finding was too big. We were getting some developments that both did not need to, um, go all the way through a full-on development review, but also were a little bit too weird for like a building permit. So, uh, ones that normally come up that fit in this are if you need to do some sort of improvement to your yard because, uh, there's heavy erosion into a creek or something like that. Well, you're not really building a structure that doesn't really get a building permit, but also it's something that really needs to be reviewed by our environmental planner, by Public Works to make sure that stormwater is taken care of, by the floodplain manager to make sure that you're not impacting other floodplains or other properties. But of course, again, it's not units, it's not square footage of commercial. So we actually created this, uh, extra category there to catch, uh, everything that we were missing. So this is, you know, you would use that land use and zoning to help you figure out your site selection. I don't know who put these together. And then of course it's staff review. We were all as smart as you are. Pretty good. And then after staff review, uh, it goes to that board review. And that's where, you know, staff will have rendered their recommendation, their professional advice to you for, um, uh, what you may want to do. And then, uh, that board review, of course, includes the board's recommendation to you as well. After you go through that and after you, if appropriate, go through the commission, you get your approval for the development plans. And that's really the, uh, planning practice for you. If you have any questions, happy to answer them.
Okay.
Stunned.
Perfect. Do we have any other, uh, any other presentations or is that?
He left.
We've got presentations.
Thank you for doing this. It is a, a good reminder for me and hopefully useful to, to our newer commissioners as well. And, uh, uh, hopefully anybody who has any questions will, will contact our excellent staff, uh, if, if things pop into your head later. I know that they like talking about this stuff. So it's, it is useful for that purpose. All right, uh, any member of the company that you don't want to add to otherwise?
I could want to say some things about the transects. Because I'm a big, I'm a form-based code fan and so I'm hoping, I don't know if it makes sense for this to go through the city or just to talk to people on the city plan board and have it originate there, but, uh, when we, well, one, I, I, what I like about the form-based code is I've been, uh, is thinking about like, what is the purpose of all of this zoning? Like, why do we have, like, what are we hoping to get out of this particular tool? And, uh, I think in the past it's been done kind of as this idea of like an Emerald City, like we as the planners know that offices should go here and businesses should go here and residents should go here. And I think what we've learned over time is that, uh, we're not quite as good at playing god with the city as we thought we were. Uh, we, uh, that there are some things that we are good at, like infrastructure, like, and there are certain things that the market just knows how to do better, just commute local entrepreneurs can do, uh, that is much better than us. What we should be thinking about is what form it takes as it faces the street. Well, how should something look? What is the actual thing? And then what actually happens within those walls is kind of, that's not our problem. Entrepreneurs are much better at figuring that out than, uh, than the city is. So when, so for us, so to pass it through, there were a couple of things, um, uh, that what we have is sort of like a, like a saucet, like a camel of a form-based code, I guess, is a good way of putting it. Like we have, uh, certain, certain allowable uses. So going back to the question of zoning, I think zoning really takes two forms. One, you want to separate where the noxious uses out, like industrial shouldn't be next to someone's home, right? But also like maybe bars shouldn't be next to someone's home or maybe, uh, which I think, uh, we still need to keep in mind when we do it. And then also like where do we actually want density to go so that we can structure infrastructure and things like that in that way? Certain things I don't see. So like in U4, which is right on the outskirts of my neighborhood, is sort of like a lower transect. You have things like, uh, you can't have restaurants in there, you can't have small hotels in there, you can't have retail, uh, things that would have a lot of benefit, I think, on along Main thoroughfares where there's a lot of this on. Right above that is U5, which is in the midtown area mostly, right near the University of Florida and you could only have residential uses that are in there. There's all kinds of these allowable use questions that, uh, I'm guessing were probably just a leftover from the last code. I'm looking at Andrew.
Yes.
Like certain things that just like helped to move it through, but I think if we were to take a look at what those allowable uses were, we'd probably say, well, that's kind of silly that the ferry right across the University of Florida can't have a restaurant today. Um, that, uh, I, I don't know how that got in there, I don't know why it's in there, but I think it's probably worth for city plan board or someone looking at that. Also the whole, much of the southwest side of town is zone RMF eight, so high density residential, which means that for huge portions of the southwest side, you can't have retail, you can't have a grocery store, you can't have restaurants, you can only have apartment complexes, which goes against sort of what we're trying to do, which is to have a 15-minute city where people can walk down the street and get access to certain things. Uh, like I said, I don't know if it's best for this to come from the city or, I know the city plan boards talked about things similarly, um, but I just wanted to bring up that I would like to move more things over into these, into these transects and into this form-based code and then kind of have a second look now that we've had it for what, 17, doing the math.
Twenty seventeen. But I think the, the process started really kind of in 20, right around 2012 is when we actually started the land development code updates. It was a five-year process to, to the code that we have.
So about 10 years ago, I guess, when we started it, it might be worth, um, brushing it off and seeing, you know, what did we do back then that made sense? What did we do back then that didn't make sense? And then trying to apply particularly on, I think egregious examples like the southwest side of town that really should have a grocery store over, is somewhere within that area. But the nice thing about, I think, the form-based code is in a lot of ways it's saying, this isn't up to us, we're not deciding grocery store goes in there. Like if the market seems to bear it, it makes sense to put a grocery store in, put the grocery store in. That, that, and I, I think that's a better use of our, of our power as regulators.
Well, yeah. So, you know, that, my, my larger thing I wanted to mention was this idea of planning versus just micromanaging. I mean, planning, uh, can be a lot, um, from a, you know, a higher view, 30,000 foot in letting other, you know, the people, you know, the entrepreneurs, the people figure out the exact specifications. We have a lot of stuff in our, um, our comprehensive plans that gives good broad guidance and allows for people to do some things that they want. Um, and the Southwest Gainesville, in particular, I'm glad you mentioned, because this is exactly, literally what I was thinking about when we talked about land use and zoning. So much of my district, um, has quite dense housing, um, and will continue to fill in, but even a dorm on campus often has a convenience store on the, on the, on the ground floor. Yet there are places in my district that if, if I'm not knocking on doors, I have to get in their car to go use, to find a restroom because there's not so much as a convenience store within blocks and blocks and blocks and blocks and blocks. Um, and not because there aren't enough people there to probably financially support one, it's just literally because it's not allowed. And I, and I'm glad that we talk about imagine, uh, GNV, uh, because I think sometimes our imagination has been constricted because of the zoning law we passed in 1930 or 1958 or, or in 2017. Things change and we, we stop imagining and it's just no longer something we can imagine. The corner store is something that is nearly unimaginable in huge swaths of our community, of our county and our nation, literally unimaginable to a point that a child does not know what a corner store is unless they've seen it on TV. And then even then they have to see it in New York City, call it a bodega and don't know that locally, we could just call it a corner store. We don't have to call it a bodega. Um, so some of this, as we, you know, as we go forward and as we talk to, um, neighbors, when they, when they look at land use, when they look at zoning, um, I think, you know, we have a plan, we pass ordinances, we have land use, uh, but even those, they're changeable, but they, they, they constrict our imagination sometimes. And I think as we go forward, when things change, we do have to look. The example, some of the examples we gave today were about, uh, particularly land use, kind of the long-term planning of populations on the demand side versus the supply side. And even on the demand side, things just changed. The pandemic showed us that. Without a change of population, suddenly people needed more space because they wanted to work from home or they were going to have to work from home or they were no longer willing to have a room. They just, and they would pay top dollar to get out of that situation. And that just drove up, um, drove up rents. And so some of those things change demand outside of our, you know, outside of what we can control, but some of it, when we talk about the, that larger planning, uh, some of this is inexorable, smaller and smaller families, at least as of right now, larger and larger homes, but the competing interest is that, or the competing factor is, you know, a lot of data suggests people literally don't want homes that big, particularly as their family gets smaller and smaller. So we have all these things going into it and so, um, I look forward to the fact that, you know, learning more about this, but also that our community, particularly the community that is not in the room, but the community that exists tomorrow, the next generation, in essence, from the future are demanding that we take action. So I'm glad, I'm glad Sean mentioned that. The future, and I always talk about, since I have a lot of students in my district, the student who needs a home four years from now is not here today, but four years from now, they're going to show up. It's, they're not the exact same person, but they're the same kind of cohort.
To Commissioner Ethan's point of, you know, kind of reviewing the code, it's been about 10 years since we started that process. So back in 2016, 2016, the county realized that they had dozens of misdemeanors just kind of thrown into their code. The state attorney was like, we're going to stop prosecuting those for you, figure them out. And so they went, we're going to clean up our code because it was after years and decades. They're like, sure, that could be a misdemeanor, sure, that could be a misdemeanor, that could be. And they went, oh no, we don't actually know where they all are. There's probably dozens, someone has to look for it. And obviously the intern that ended up looking at all of them. That said, it was weeks and weeks and hours and hours of looking because we just didn't know. It's one of those where as we build upon it, and that's just how our government is, for better or worse, we have term limits and people are only here for, you know, in the past three to six years, a long hauler is a rarity. Uh, you don't know. Staff has been here forever, but even then they might not remember everything that gets tossed in. So I would totally be in favor of, it might take a dedicated staff person or like an outsourcing of that. I don't know if the plan board itself would be the first step of where to look for that, but I would leave that decision, but just in my experience, if you need someone to just sit down and come through.
Yeah.
And that is, that is a slog, but it has to be done because you don't know if, if in a Frankenstein kind of creation of, we've just kind of added to things and we moved things around and, oh shoot, I don't remember that we did that 15 years ago. It's just kind of sad or no one viewed it, but it's technically still sitting there. Um, so I'd be very supportive of kind of just looking through, uh, what no longer makes sense, what is arbitrary at this point or just, uh, obsolete. I think that would be long-term planning, planning. Long-term planning is a good thing to do every tenure. I mean, we look at our charter every so many, why not look at our code every so many to just see what is obsolete, what has not, because we change the overarching picture, but we don't, to my knowledge, like go deep in and kind of clean out and recycle the, the stuff that's no longer usable. So I'm very much a part of, I would leave it to staff to kind of figure out the best use, uh, because it is, from personal experience, a slog to go find the minutia that no one uses anymore, so you don't even know where to start finding it.
So, thank you all. There are a few things that, that makes me consider that I had to talk about. One of them is, I, I've said many times and some of it goes back to before we were here, that I'm just not a big fan of PDs. Because that's where we get into the arbitrary pieces of code in my opinion. We, if we want changes, if we want certain things to be happening in the city, I would like us to do that with the code so that the code is predictable, so that you don't have to go hire somebody who knows all the secret passages to get a PD brought to the city commission. I would like to see our code be predictable, useful, predictable, something that, that works for our community. We have a lot of PDs. We continue to add PDs. I would prefer that, that we consider, why are we adding PDs? I mean, the, the, take a bigger approach, why are we adding PDs? You know, is there something that's wrong with the code that we would like to, to change? And, and do it from that perspective rather than a block here and a block and a half there because somebody was able to hire the right people to come talk to us. I don't, I don't feel like the way we do it is particularly fair and there's a better way. So let's get some thought, not necessarily today, but individually to, and talking with staff and talking with the community about what we might like to see be different to come back to us rather than just waiting for individual PDs coming along at a time. Now, another thing that I want to remind you all about is next month, March, or at some point in the not too distant future, I'm going to bring back the idea of taking a critical look at what I'm calling the Depot South Neighborhood, the 60-plus acres south of Depot Avenue between Main and Sixth and south of 16th Avenue. It's currently almost all industrial. We didn't spend eight and a half million dollars on, uh, South Main Street to, uh, for, for that to remain industrial. We didn't build Depot Park across the street from it for that to remain industrial. Clearly, the world is, is moving around it to, to make those different uses. Doesn't mean anybody's going to not be able to do what they already do on those sites. But rather than having 10 or 15 angry conversations every time somebody wants to sell and redevelop a parcel in that 60-plus acres, I would like us to, as a community, get a good look at what we want that to be over the next 20 years and then make some decisions about it. Make decisions about how we build infrastructure and Make decisions about how we build infrastructure into that. What, what do we do that moves the community's voice forward? So that it doesn't have to always be a cement plant. It doesn't have to always be a roof trust company and those sorts of things. We inherited that, it built up over a, you know, 60, 70, 80-year period there. But the world's changing around it and we need to respond to that. And I would rather we drove it than it just happened to us. So be thinking about that, how we might accomplish it. And I'll bring it back forward sometime in March or April to try to get some, some real things happening there.
So my thoughts are kind of at the, you know, kind of at the 30,000-foot level is when we talk about things like zoning and land use, and this is extremely helpful for me because I know these are such complex concepts is, is to overlay everything with what are the advantages and the disadvantages there? In other words, concrete, objective information, data, resources, sources. And then you put the community piece. What do they feel about these changes? And those things, when I hear those things together, is typically I make any decision is. So I would say for our workshops in particular, and some of them, you were talking about Mr. Mayor, be great as that we have. What is the data, what does it show? What is the city's doing? What is the, what are the sources of the information? And then when we hear from people, you know, sitting at the dais or via email or call-in or the myriad of ways that we have, we put those together. But in particular, the advantages and disadvantages of anything, the pros and cons. Especially like when you were talking, Commissioner Eastman, about the different areas of zoning and how you change. That I like to see because that helps me at least be, be an informed decision maker.
Really?
Thank you.
It's first.
Well, I just wanted to say, I, I think this excellent nuanced conversation that y'all are having is hopefully indicative of the value that you guys have gotten from this discussion. Because as Commissioner Book and all the commissioners indicated, a lot of what we're talking about is nuanced. It's, it's that, you know, we have values in the community and oftentimes those are balancing those things so they're being kept in harmony. I, I think from staff perspective on, you know, sort of discussing about the zoning piece, as like, as your, you know, lead sausage-making line workers, like, we are cursed with knowledge about, oh God, this, you know, I know I can still look through the code and say, oh, this provision was put in, you know, you know, by this commissioner in response to this community group. And that is, I think, in that diagram that Forrest showed, that sort of community engagement sort of piece to it. It's not necessarily the code that somebody would probably start out to write, you know, from like broad clock. But it is the code that we have. And it is important, I think, these are opportunities to make sure that, you know, we are going back and reevaluating things and making sure that, that our code continues in our, in our zoning and all those things continue to reflect the values of, of the community. I remember very distinctly to the, you know, to the transect sort of use question. Prior to 2017, we didn't have microbreweries in the code. Those are popular, we were actually using an old book called the SIC Code, the Standard Industrial Classification Annual, which was like a book that was put out in like 1980 to like, by the Department of Revenue, the federal Department of Revenue to classify industries. So all of our zoning code was tied to that. So if it wasn't a use that was thought about in like 1985, it did not exist. So I could like, I could go through the book and tell you where you could do, I mean, it had everything. I could tell you where you could do rodeo clown rental supplies. But we didn't have something on microbrewery because that wasn't a use that existed in 1985. Now, obviously, like when we moved to, to the code that we have now, we're trying to generalize those categories to give not just staff, but to give property owners and business people the more flexibility and more ability for staff to say, yes, this use falls under this general category and we can improve that. And we're not sort of in the place of, of, you know, saying no because this code hasn't been updated, you know, in 15 years. So hopefully that's helpful. But I, I think the, the point is you guys are having a good nuanced conversation. And that's probably what we wanted to get out of this. So appreciate it.
And thank you again to staff for putting this together. It is, it is useful for me, I hope it is for everybody else. And nothing else against us to this point where we can talk about a few things that, that are priorities for us. But it absolutely is useful for me as a reminder of how this works. And this really is the basis of so much of what we do. And we may go months without having a conversation about utility policy. We may go weeks and weeks and weeks without having to deal with any GPD issues. But every single meeting, there's a land use or a zoning issue or both, every single one. This is, this is mostly what we do. And it matters. It's not just that it just keeps coming up and it's something we have to vote on. It's real. It changes how the community exists. So thank you for your attention to it. And we will, we will not have, for a reminder, a GPC meeting this Thursday. Most of staff will be with me in Tallahassee. Staff, but most of the charters will be with me in Tallahassee for command and performance. And we will have, we will have this under review Wednesday afternoon. And we will have a meeting next, next Thursday. Thank you.